Twenty twenty five Planning Commission meeting to order at seven oh three. And we'll do the roll call first. Dennis Ferraro, Eagles Miss Road.
Bethany Cody, Lake Enchantment.
Jim Johnson, White Oak Drive.
Linda Winslow, Norwood Street.
Eric.
Eric Powers, Staff Planner. Apologies.
Okay. And now we'll do the election of officers. I'd like to nominate Jim Johnson as the chairperson of the Planning Commission.
Support.
Okay. Any other discussion or interest? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Vice President.
I'd like to nominate Bethany Cody as vice chairman, chairperson of the Planning Commission.
I'd like to have you do it.
I'll second that.
All right. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And we don't need a secretary, do we? We do? Okay. Nominations for secretary. So as of right now, we only have these four board members, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Ms., do you want to do the secretary? I'll nominate Dennis Ferraro, Secretary.
Support.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Post? Okay. Well, then we can just keep going as is and get the approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Minutes from the previous meeting of December eleventh, twenty twenty four.
Move to approved minutes of the prior meeting. It was December eleventh, twenty twenty four.
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Post? All right. Public comment. Lot of public here tonight. Do you want to comment now or wait for the agenda items that you might be here for? Come on up if you want to. Comment now.
Um, how does this usually go?
Uh, whatever you want to do. If you want to make a comment now, you can, or wait till the agenda item comes up that you're here for, and you can comment on it then.
Okay. Let this lady do her thing. Mine's just general, anyway.
Lynn Durant, two six five Bishop Woods Road. I want to just mention a couple of things briefly, uh, board-related that I'm not sure Linda knows all the details of. First of all, we had a great work session with Renovari and, uh, Brownfield Development folks on Monday night, and it's recorded. So it would be great if you could have the time to check on that. Talks about TIFs and what might happen with that, um, development and how long it's going to take and the financing. So that's good information.
It's on the website?
Yes. Yep, it'll say.
Is it on YouTube also?
Yes. It's faster to try to... Sometimes if you go to YouTube, you can't find it right away.
Yeah.
Even though they're kind of in date order. If you go to the website and just do the video, it'll usually take it, take you to the last one. It's a little bit faster.
Okay.
Um, and then just a little bit of, um, like, history, sort of. You might know that we are in the process of working with the city of Marquette to buy into the, the city water system. And if you don't, that, you know, I can get more information for you. But, um, we just, uh, the first step of that was to refinance our buildings. And we're going to be doing that in the next week. It'll come through, uh, Incredible Bank. They've been great. They've been incredible, helping us move, uh, loans over to, uh, bonds and pay that off. And then we can approach the city and ask them if they're willing to let us buy into the system. And we have done a bunch of different... We've had consultants on the, um, the quantity and the length of time we need to have, you know, enough water for the township looking forward, and those studies are all done. So it looks like we would buy sixteen percent of the city. So that's just kind of a quickie on, uh, where we are with that. And just to give you a heads up, that you will have, uh, another board member at your next meeting if things work well. Leanne Cash Marskey's coming back. She was a commissioner before and had some family things she had to take up on and had to, you know, let her term go. She finished her term, but...
Who is that, Lynn?
Leanne Cash Marskey.
Leanne.
Yep.
Okay.
So she should be, um, I'll recommend to the board for Wednesday night next week, and then she should be able to be at your next meeting. So you should have a full board. Um, and then I would like to make some comments, uh, reserved time on the master plan discussion.
Okay.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Person to speak? See, no one else. We'll move to six A. New business public hearing number zero one zero eight two five dash one. Uh, proposed vehicle sales service repair parts and supply land used to be located on property located within the development district. The address is forty-one thirty-five U.S. Forty-One West in Marquette. Parcel tax ID is five two zero eight zero one nine zero two four two zero. Seth Kiesler from Diesel Pro Services. Eric.
We have received an application, a special use permit application for a vehicle repair facility at forty-one thirty-five U.S. Forty-One West, uh, which is shown on the map on the left there. I do have some street views a little later in the presentation, which might make it easier to kind of pinpoint which property we're talking about. That is the property there with the building on the, the hill of sorts. Um, there it is, looking east towards the city, and here it is, looking west towards Nagani. So the property itself does, does have three buildings. It is in the development district zoning, um, as you can see on the zoning map here, and it is bordered on all sides except for the south by development district zoning. To the south is rural residential. This one was brought to our attention, uh, as we understood it, the business was already in operation. They were unaware that they needed a special use permit. Um, and so as, as our kind of internal policy is, we try to bring people into compliance rather than, um, fine and ding them for everything. So that's what we're doing here, is trying to bring them into compliance. Um, so you will note on the property, there are three, um, at least visible from the aerial, three separate buildings, that one closest to the road, U.S. Forty-One, that is, and then the two warehouse-type buildings in the back. Um, and as I understand it, it would be, the business is in one of those two warehouse buildings. I believe it's the one closer to the road of those two warehouse buildings, um, and then in the front half. So in the shot on the right is that building, and so the business would be in about half of that building.
Eric, no, that's the wrong building.
That is the wrong building. Okay.
That building.
Um, and that is, who just spoke is Andrew Kilbo, who was the owner of the property. I assume that the...
Go to your next.
The front building.
Go to the next one.
So yeah, this is submitted by the applicant. Circled in blue is showing where the business location would be, and then red circled would be the parking that would be needed. And again, I just wanted to include these two, just to show the approach. I assume all traffic to and from the property uses the developed entrance and not this, uh, dirt road of sorts on the, on the, uh, east side of the property. So there is the, um, developed, uh, curb cut access to U.S. Forty-One.
Yeah, you can't actually see the warehouse building from the road at all.
So this is, I will note, a, uh, vehicle repair in the development district, zoning district, is a allowable use permitted by right, however, being that it borders residential zoning. That's where the special use permit is required. Uh, and that's what we are doing here tonight. So, um, included in front of you, that was not in your packet, uh, is a lease between the owner of the property and the applicant, as well as, uh, two pieces of correspondence, which I will read into the record once we get the public hearing started. But I figured I would print those two for you to have in front of you. Other than that, I'd be open to questions. Your authority with the public hearing, so.
Can I make a comment there?
I'll, I'll call you up after. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Any questions from anyone before we open the public hearing?
The, the other buildings that are shown, or the other portions of the buildings?
Sure.
Have they been currently used for commercial purposes?
They are. As I understand it, uh, all of the remaining space is being used by Yard Builders LLC, which is the company of the owner.
Okay. And there was some discussion at the last meeting about, uh, because it's going to be a automobile repair shop, and there'll be, uh, grease and oil and so forth. There's a certain, uh, catchment device. You probably know it. What is the proper name for it?
I...
A grease catcher or...
Sure. I, I don't know the proper term, but that would be required. Um, we would depend on state laws and regulations for that to be enforced. I did include in your packet, um, showing that the applicant has registered with the state of Michigan for a vehicle repair facility. The address on there is incorrect. It was before, uh, he was able to sign the lease on this place.
So, so just to inform me, and I'm not yet clear on it, is this type of catchment device is standard required equipment for any vehicle repair place, even, uh, even if there's a vehicle storage that people are going to change oil, and we require that under ordinance?
As far as I know, yes.
And, and then is it correct that the waste is contained in that system, and then it's sucked out and disposed of in a, in a environmentally safe way at some point?
Not being completely familiar with the industry, uh, yes, that's how I understand it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Do you know if that's a township ordinance, a county or a state?
It's either county or state. It's not township.
Okay. So it's not...
As far as the, the, the specific rules and laws for the operation of the business, including disposal of expiry oil and everything like that, that would be county or state.
Okay.
Is, do we have to, uh, and if, if this is approved, would we have to state as a specific condition that that, uh, environmental protection be...
You wouldn't have to, but it's probably not a bad idea, I would say.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from anyone? Okay.
And like I said, the owner is here, and I would invite him up to address you guys with anything he wants, so.
Uh, would you like to come up now before we open the public hearing? I mean...
My name's Andrew Kilbo. Dennis, to your question, that building doesn't have any floor drains. So the oil catchment system that you're talking about would be as if it had a floor drain, and then that water from the buildings, you know, inside, if snow and stuff was melting off, would be taken outside. But there's no floor drains where Seth is renting. So everything that's in there is contained, and then he cleans it up and puts it into a, like, tote, ICB tote, just like you'd see at AutoZone or Willie's Tire Shop, any of those things. So all this work is done inside and contained.
So what, uh, no, when you do your work on diesels?
Yep.
You work on diesels and trucks and...
I don't work on them there.
He just owns the building.
I just own the building.
He's a property owner.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Business owner.
So you're saying it would just be, it wouldn't be drained into a drain?
No, there's no drain.
There's no drain?
Just concrete.
Everything would have to be cleaned up?
Correct.
Put into a container?
Yeah.
Disposed of safely as waste?
Yeah. Swept up, scooped up, put into a container, basically.
Okay.
Yeah. Oil dry. Yeah. And then I know in the past, when the previous owner of the property had rented it to other businesses, Hunter Audio, uh, used that business, that building for many years, and as well as nine oh six technologies for many, many years. So I know, like, the auto industry has been in that building and used it, so.
Any other questions? Sit down?
Thank you.
All right. We will open the public hearing at seven eighteen.
I do have the two to read in, so.
At seven eighteen, so anyone wishing to... You want to read it now before?
Sure.
Okay.
Seven eighteen, you said?
Yep.
So we did receive two pieces of email correspondence, and I will read those into the record. My name is Brett Conklin. I live at Eight Oak Lane in the Northwood Acres subdivision. As the president of the Northwoods Acres Association and frequent user of the Ironor Heritage Trail, my concern about the proposed auto diesel repair shop at forty-one thirty-five U.S. Forty-One West is possible soil and water contamination. There is a stream running in close proximity to the buildings on the property. Although I'm not opposed to the proposed use of the property, I trust the Marquette Township Planning Commission will ensure all local and state recommendations and regulations are followed and enforced to protect the environment from any possible contamination. Thank you, Brett Conklin. And the second one. Dear Mr. Powers and the Marquette Township Planning Commissioners, I'm submitting our comments in regard to the notice of public hearing for a special use permit application for a proposed vehicle sales, service, repair, parts and supply land use. Our residence slash property, four point five acres, is within three hundred feet of the proposed use at fifteen... Our residence property, four point five acres at fifteen Northwood Lane, is within three hundred feet of the proposed use. My wife Crystal and I have lived here for thirty-nine years and raised our family. Between the Shelby's and our residences is a large cedar wetland with a stream. We have numerous wildlife that frequent this wetland, including yearly nesting ducks. Our water wells are located within this wetland area. To issue this special use permit, we recommend the Planning Commission require the appropriate environmental regulations and permits be issued and complied with. For example, permits for groundwater protection, wastewater discharge, sewage septic system, fuel tank containment systems, and any and all others. Very truly yours, John and Crystal Reynolds, fifteen Northwood Lane, Marquette, Michigan, four nine eight five five.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak now, please come forward. Name and address, please.
Good evening. Jim Shelby, fourteen Northwood Lane. A couple of variations of items that need to be potentially addressed. I have one question, and unfortunately, we're very after the fact in things, so we have no knowledge of what's been commented and information provided beforehand. But, um, this facility, this, this, um, diesel, diesel repair facility, um, should have its own restroom, and I have a question of whether they do that or not, and a proper septic system and so on associated with that. I'm a little concerned about, um, you know, basically, uh, you know, uh, well, if you look at, if you look at your, your, um, picture here, you see that line that goes behind the building? That is the stream that goes right behind the, uh, the buildings there. And a little bit of a concern about, uh, you know, if, uh, restrooms, if restrooms are not used. Let's put it that way. Um, second item, um, about, uh, the holding tank system that is often required for automotive repair facilities. A comment was made about everything is contained within the building. I don't think that that is completely correct, in particular if you start thinking about vehicles coming in during the wintertime and, uh, you know, basically snow dropping off and, uh, you know, basically some snow and water accumulation and so on. That is not going to be taken care of normally with, um, with oil dry. Uh, you know, if they have an oil spill, something like that, maybe that's a possibility. But you can have some intermixing with oil, with the, the water and so on that's, uh, that's, that is melting from the snow dropping off of trucks, et cetera. And, um, I think probably the state of Michigan would look at that as needing a holding tank that needs to be pumped out. And I don't know if, I got the impression that that's not what's being done. There is also in the regulations that any earth change activity within five hundred feet of a lake or a stream needs to be permitted. Um, I'm not sure if there's going to be any work that's going to be done in their parking area and so on, et cetera, there. But the question is, are there permits for that? Um, we do know that there was a road that's put across, uh, the Heritage Trail. That is very close. That's within thirty feet of the, uh, stream. I doubt if any permits were, were done with that. Questions about waste oil storage and license picked up for any waste oil that is done? I would imagine they're doing oil changes and things like that. Might drain diesel tanks if necessary, et cetera. And how that is being handled? Also, questions about antifreeze. If they're doing any engine work on the, on the, um, diesel vehicles and so on, you often have the potentiality of having antifreeze that is spilled onto the floor. Again, that's not something that often is taken up with. You could do it with oil dry, but it may not be done. We're concerned about that. Parts cleaning solvents and equipment is a potential issue, um, that needs to be potentially looked at also. There is back there also, and I do not know if it's related to this, um, repair facility, but there are two fuel tanks, very large, one very large fuel tank back there, and I do not see any containment system around that for any leakage. Now, I don't know how that's handled. You know, they could be double-walled tanks or something like that, but I, I don't know how that's being handled. You know, there's questions that are going on with that. Um, we're con, really concerned about the potentiality of, uh, you know, basically any pollution that might occur, particularly by the stream. And that stream goes across the highway, under the highway, and eventually down into the Dead River Basin and into Lake Superior. Those are our primary concerns. I would point out that, um, there may be some questions about things that have transpired in that area. Um, there is a waste pile that's across the Heritage Trail. Very large waste pile is there. I, it, um, I wonder a little bit about how things have been handled. Thank you.
Eric, you have a great radio voice.
Thank you.
I've been out, um, excuse me?
Name and address, please.
Oh, Gene Whitman Shelby, fourteen Northwood Lane, Marquette Township. We built our house there in nineteen seventy-five, were the, pretty much the first house there. The neighborhood have grown up around us. The brush pile and the road that has been pushed through is on our property. That's number one. So something needs to be done about that. Nobody from this company approached us about, um, you know, if they're able to push their stuff on our property, but it is on our property. We have surveys. So there's that. We have lost so much of our natural habitat around this area. When Subaru came in and they destroyed that, um, apple orchard that was the home to many, many deer that we now see are killed on the highway because of loss of habitat. We have had, um, wildlife using our wetlands, or I call it a swamp. John's a little more PC than I am, and have been using our swamp since the day we were there. And I am so worried about pollution. Uh, I, I, we have returning mallards and wood ducks every year. And I'm very worried about pollution. The other, um, thing is, you know, about traffic. When traffic comes from the west, it is barreling down the highway. That is not a safe driveway at all. I think that if this goes through, you're going to see not only car accidents, but probably some fatalities because of how the traffic comes down going east. That's a big concern. Regarding compliance, I'm aware that this, um, car company, I'm sorry, I don't remember the name, has had at least two violations. And ignorance is no, uh, excuse for not knowing what the laws are in terms of special permits and so forth. So I have a trust issue because they've gone ahead and they've done things with the brush, with the road, with fixing cars with no proper permits. How can we believe that they're going to clean up the way they should? Who oversees that? Who, who checks on that? I think that there needs to be soil samples done now. And if this is approved, which I hope it is not, they need to be done on a regular basis to ensure that, um, things are being done properly. Because I don't trust that they will be based on past practices. I'm sorry to say that, but it's how I feel. The other, the other major thing, I don't know how many of you know, but my husband used to own Shelby Diesel and Auto Care. And one of the things that put him out of business was a fire in the township years ago. Maybe twenty-five years ago. Big fire hazard. If, if it can happen to him, it can happen to anybody. And that's very close to, as has already been pointed out, um, potential pollution problems. So I, I think there are plenty of places in the county for a facility like this that is not going to have the, uh, potential problems that we're listing here. So I, I really hope it doesn't go through. I hope we can maintain our, our, um, environment. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Reynolds, fifteen Northwood Lane. Eric read my letter into the records, so I won't repeat it.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening. Steve Lilly, ten Northwood Lane. I really don't have any new information, but just want to voice my, um, agreement with the sentiments already expressed by my neighbors and by, uh, I came in a little late, but I thought I heard a letter being read by, um, our association, uh, kind of overseer there, Brett Conklin, and just want to voice my support for that as well.
I'm sorry. What was your address again?
Ten Northwood Lane.
Anyone else? Like, come up again?
Andrew Kilbo, property owner again. Um, to address some of your concerns, I know everything that comes out of the vehicles or drips off the vehicles or could be coming from any of the vehicles. Seth has containment, uh, containers in the building, and it'll all be pumped out. And then with your concern about the road, uh, that's a driveway to an access for previous, uh, to access. I own both parcels.
I know you do, but it's on our property.
So to that, I met with the DNR, and I have surveys, and, um, Eric has a copy of my permit. Um, and right where I have that road is on my property and, um, uh, exactly where I'm allowed to cross into my, that parcel.
I think we should compare our surveys.
Absolutely. If you'd like to, I can happily meet with you. Any other concerns I can address?
Restrooms?
Yes, there's a restroom in the building with a, uh, county-approved septic system.
Mr. Kilbo, I have a question for you. Um, I know you're not the owner of the business.
Yep.
Just the owner of the property.
Yep.
But having seen him work in there, what is his, um, like, quantity of work? Is it like one truck at a time?
Yeah.
It's not?
Yeah, one truck at a time. He's a decent mechanic, so it's like...
It's like one employee?
No, it's just him.
It's just him?
It's just him.
But we don't know how long they'll stay like that.
It's a...
Well, no, and you shouldn't speak of that either.
Yeah, I don't know.
Just of right now, the facts.
As of right now, it's just him.
Well, I know we're still in the public hearing, but I will note that any expansion of the use, and that would be included as an expansion, kind of an increase in the business capacity, would require coming back to the planning commission to seek approval for that expansion, so.
And there's no room for him to expand. He's used all his space. So it's only a forty-by-twenty-four spa. So basically, you couldn't fit one pickup truck in there. That's it. Maybe two, if you really squeeze them. But you can't get more than that in the building.
And thank you for providing the lease. It does say in here that it's just a one-year lease, which expires, looks like, in November. So there's really about ten months left of the lease.
Yes.
If anything of his business changes or that you see that he's not doing something, would we have like your word that you wouldn't remove to him?
Correct.
Or that he wasn't acting as, you know?
Yes. And I know he's not here, but I guess I'll speak on his behalf just a little bit. In terms of a diesel mechanic, he's very clean, very organized. There's only like two vehicles sitting outside, you know, because he's only working on one at a time. He stays in this little parking area, which was existing, a parking area, not new. Yeah.
Because it's your building and it's your property, and I'm sure you don't want your property to be ruined.
Correct.
Either. Is there a brush pile out there?
Yes, so the brush pile is from clearing that section of trees, and that's it.
And you feel like it's on your property?
It's on my property, yes.
And I was going to speak on that as well regarding the trail crossing. That what that's, while it's the same owner, two different properties, so it's a related issue. It's not, I would say, not relevant to the discussion tonight, being that it is two separate properties. We do have a trail crossing permit in hand, a copy of it, that Mr. Kipplup provided from the DNR. And I would say that regarding the, not that it's a dispute, but the disagreement over the property line, that is not something the township's going to get involved in, as it is a civil dispute of source. We would depend on property owners to work that out amongst themselves, comparing surveys like they just discussed, so.
It's good clarification. I understand what this agenda item is.
Sure.
Can I speak out of turn and ask who is going to ensure there's compliance regarding the pollution aspects?
Like the holding tanks? The holding tanks inside the building?
No.
I mean, I can take that responsibility. I am the property owner.
Are you licensed to do that?
No, I'm just the property owner. I don't know who would be licensed to do that, I guess. That would be the state of Michigan. I would assume issuing permits for him being a licensed repair facility.
Is Mr. Kiefer here tonight?
No, he's not.
We were, at least I was expecting him. He said he had stated his intentions on coming, but he's not here tonight.
But he's not required to be here, but it helps. I'll work a lot during here.
Okay, thank you.
So, well, so we've made comments during the public hearing period, so I'll just make some comments, do okay, or questions, is it okay?
For him?
Yeah. So there, Mrs. Shelby mentioned there are two fuel tanks on the property.
Yep, those are yard builders' fuel tanks. Those are yard builders' fuel tanks, nothing to do with the diesel mechanic.
And how long has yard builders been there?
Since May this year.
Do you have safety things in place for those fuel tanks?
Yes, they're double-walled. I checked with all the necessary regulations on them.
So, yeah.
Is there secondary confinement?
Secondary, no.
Well, I guess we've answered the question. This was part of each of the items.
But this isn't.
Okay, why don't we just close the public hearing?
Close the public hearing, that gets questions, yeah, that gets better, yeah.
Kind of getting out of hand a little bit.
Sorry.
All right, anyone else wishing to speak first before we close the public hearing? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at seven-thirty-eight. And Eric, did you have anything you wanted to address here before?
The only thing I was going to address was the trail crossing issue, which I did during the public hearing, so.
Okay. All right, Danny, you're up.
Yeah, so I had some questions here. So I, there's two gas tanks there. Is it gas or is it fuel?
Diesel.
Okay, and are they above ground?
They're above ground, yes.
Okay. And so what's done in terms of spillage to keep spillage from reaching into the ground?
You can come back up here and address this.
There's nothing special. They're just a double-walled tank. I mean, you put it in, you fill it up. We're standing there the whole time. You shut it off, you pump it back up.
Is it on a, is it on a concrete base?
It's not on concrete, it's on recycled asphalt.
On asphalt?
Recycled asphalt, yes.
And what, and this building, in which the diesel repair shop is going to be, what's the surface of the inter?
Concrete.
Concrete.
Yes, no floor drains.
And when you mentioned containment tanks?
Yes.
Would you elaborate on what do you, what are the containment tanks? Are they just steel drums, or are they?
Steel drums slash, do you know what an ICB tote is?
No, what is it?
It's like a two-hundred-gallon plastic tote with a metal cage around it. You'll see them in like AutoZone or other repair shops. And it's basically their waste or containment tank. Where they put it. And then every six months, two years, whatever, how often he fills it up, a licensed pumper comes and pumps it out and takes it away.
Okay, so when a vehicle is being repaired, is there a lift?
There's no lift in there.
No lift?
No lift.
Okay. So how does the, I don't, you're not in the business, maybe you know. So how are, how are fuel tanks drained and put into this containment?
I don't know exactly how Seth does it, but I've seen it done with a pump system, where it pumps right into the fuel tank and into the containment tank.
Okay.
Yep, so it's not just like let go on the floor. Same thing with like an oil change. You know, you put some catch basin underneath the vehicle and catches the oil.
Okay, okay. And regarding the stream that's behind the building, how close proximity is the stream to the back of the building?
To the side of the building, it's about thirty feet.
Thirty feet?
Yeah. Yeah, forty feet. And also, I guess I'll note that the building has a block foundation. So I guess for some reason, something crazy were to happen, no oil or anything, nothing can get out of the building. I guess is my point.
Mrs. Shelby mentioned there have been two violations already with this company. Do you know what she's talking about?
No, I do not.
Do you, Eric?
So I think you did most of the, when you first bought the property and were establishing the uses, did mostly dealings with Jason. But as I understood it, it was a, kind of the same situation that the applicant was in, that they, Andrew wasn't aware that permits were required. Even though his business was permitted by right use, you still have to submit for a zoning compliance application. So that, I guess, would be considered one of the violations.
Okay, I was trying to, so it was a violation of doing the business without having special use permit?
Yep.
Was there any other violations, such as an environmental violation?
Not that we're aware of.
Or cited by any agency or anything like that?
No, and the trail crossing issue, but again, that was dealt with. It's been not, still being dealt with. I mean, it's, I mean, permits in hand and everything, but that might be the other issue at hand.
What's the, is, does the stream that goes behind the building have a name? Greek or Greek name?
I don't know. No. It's only two feet wide, two feet wide at the most, three feet wide.
Okay.
Do you know if that's the name to the stream?
Not that I'm aware, no.
I think it just drains the swamp that's back there.
Okay.
It's my understanding of it.
All right, so Mr. Shelby raised a concern about trucks come in. It's been raining, snowing. The snow melts off, gets on the floor, potentially mixes with contaminants. What's your response to that?
That goes in the same holding tank.
How would they get it off the floor into the holding tank?
Oil dry or squeegee and scoop it up or suck it up with the pump system.
Okay. What, let me ask you another question. So in terms of the construction of the building itself, so it's on a concrete slab?
Yes.
And then to the rear of the building, which would be the wall that faces the stream and so forth?
Yes.
What's the, is it a metal corrugated? Or is it a, is the whole building block cement block?
No, cement block goes up like three feet approximately. And then it's two-by-six studs on top of that.
Okay. So at the, at the floor level?
Yes.
You go to the right angle and then you have concrete blocks?
Yes.
Okay.
Three feet up.
And then is that, if you would look at the building from behind, is the, is the elevation of the floor higher than the ground?
Yes.
Okay. Well, Mr. Shelby also mentioned we concern about disturbance of the earth and moving of the earth. And what's going to happen when the park, when the parking lot's constructed? Will it be run off into the stream? Will the stream be polluted? Will it be blocked? What's, maybe Eric, and what's his story on that?
The parking lot is existing. There's already gravel there.
Okay, so there'll be no new construction for a parking lot?
No. And if it needed additional gravel, then a silt fence would be installed.
Okay.
And a soil erosion permit, I guess, would have to be pulled with the county.
Okay. There was a mention by Mrs. Kirby, or Mrs. Shelby, about the potential traffic dangers and of cars entering from the paved driveway. What's been your experience with?
We've had no issues at all. I cleared some trees to the west of the entrance a little bit, so you can see better, so you can sit back on the highway like twenty feet approximately. Yeah, that's before the tree.
Right, I was just going to say, sorry for interrupting, but this is a dated image compared to what he just said.
Yeah, so some trees have been cleared to the west. So you can sit like, right where the asphalt changes, basically right by that power pole, you can sit back there and watch the traffic. And then we do commercial snow removal as yard builders. So we plow the entrance every morning when it snows at the four-six a.m. And I salt and sand the entrance every single time. And sometimes multiple times, depending on if it's ice here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric, would, if he gets approval from us, are there any other permits he has to get from the county? Is addressing any of this from the state for any of these other issues that we've been talking about?
As far as I'm aware, no. That would be a question for the applicant, though. And like we discussed before the public hearing, it might be wise to include that as a condition to obtain any and all state, county, local permits for a vehicle repair business.
Eric, I do know that he applied for a state permit for a mechanical license. I don't, I think it was issued, I don't...
Yeah, and as I said in my staff report, in your packet is a copy of the state of Michigan business registration, basically, for the motor vehicle repair.
And I do know they inspected the facility. They inspected the facility.
Okay.
So I know he has to have like containment, eye wash station, fire extinguishers, et cetera. I don't know the rest, but...
Is there a certificate issued?
Yes.
By, is it more than just this license?
I would think so, yeah.
Okay. Can we make a condition, if it is approved, that this certificate of compliance with all the requirements for a diesel or vehicle repair be submitted to the planning commission staff?
Sure.
Within whatever, two weeks, thirty days? In a time we matter, let's put it that way.
That would be on you as the commissioner to make, but yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm just saying.
Sounds valid, yeah.
Okay.
So I have a couple of questions. Well, one for sure. So, so we're talking about the trees that got cut down, but they have nothing to do with this business. And then we're talking, we were talking about some tanks, and that has nothing to do with this.
Would you mind coming back and sort of?
So I just want to, I just want to make that clear because there were lots of things discussed here. And some of them, maybe many of them, have nothing to do with this applicant.
Correct.
So the applicant is just applying for the property. I'm going to call it a license. Is that what he's applying for?
A special use permit.
A special use permit for a business in the space he is renting. And the owner is responsible for some things.
Yes.
Yes, so the owner and the businesses are...
Owner of the business.
Okay, just so we're all clear, because I feel like we got tracked off here a bit.
Yeah. Fuel tanks are separate.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, and I know, well, I don't know, but I assume that the stream and the testing of the soil would probably be in his best interest or your best interest as the landowner to get the soil tested prior to and to get it after the end of the lease to make sure that you are clear. That's just a comment. That has nothing to do with this really either. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I have one question. Would he be doing any work with semi-trucks at all?
As of right now, I've not seen a semi-truck in there.
Okay. But if he did, he would just be working on the tractor, not the trailer, I'm assuming?
Yeah, no, never.
So we're not worried about trailers trying to make that?
No.
Okay.
Tractor only if, he only has forty feet. So whatever can fit in forty feet, it'll be tractor only if he ever were to work on it.
Just a matter of curiosity, how high, how high is that overhead door? Or those overhead doors, I should say.
Ooh, they're not high.
So that's the wrong building. But his overhead door is sixteen feet tall. Twelve by sixteen, I think.
Okay, I think we're done.
Thanks.
Danny Wilson, Orchard Street. I just had one question. Is this something that the fire department should inspect also before this all takes place?
I think that they probably have inspected it or are going to have to inspect it.
As far as I know, they haven't. They're aware of it. I mean, they're included on all correspondence by the planning commission. But that could be a condition too.
Wouldn't it?
Don't they get our business?
They have to be able, or have to go up and look at the, you know, layout of the road to make sure they can get up and get out? Like usually?
Well, with no, no construction or no change to the topography of the land, I mean, there's...
The lawns, there's no change, and it's still fine.
Yeah, because when it was initialed for the commercial use, initially it was inspected and the lawns, there's no change. Is that where that goes?
Has it been inspected for this business? That's my question with the diesel, the fuel, everything else. I can, I can see a disaster happen real quick, so, thank you.
Can I talk?
Sure, or not?
Um, sure. Gene Whitman, Shelby, 14 Northwood Lane. I am wondering about the advisability of this group having a study and maybe a site visit of your own and for you to learn more about the things that this gentleman's been talking about, the containment and so forth, because it seems like we're taking everybody, including us, at our word and maybe you need to do more due diligence than that. Find out what the issues really are and what the products are and what we're talking about. I don't know if that's a good idea. And, oh, Linda, the, the fuel tanks, right, they're totally separate, but we didn't know that till tonight, but pollution's pollution and it's not far from that stream.
Correct.
So it is good to be aware of it and there probably should be something underneath them, but there isn't, so.
Yeah, and, and we would have to look at that separately when that property is sold next time.
But it's good that you clarified the.
Yeah, while we're looking at it.
So I guess that is by way of a suggestion of having a more due diligence on your part to look at these things and to really know what they are.
If I'm not mistaken, I don't believe that's in our job to do that, that we can't look at that part of it, it's just, you know, whether it's all the conditions for this and then that would be up to the county or your state to go further with that.
Correct.
You can Google it.
We're not allowed to.
Give me a break.
All right, any other questions? Someone wants to do that with all those conditions on there, make a motion or?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed special use stated in, in 6A, subject to the conditions that the planning commission be provided within the next 15 days with a copy of the certificate issued by the State of Michigan regarding their inspection and certification of this particular use as a diesel repair shop and so forth. Secondly, as a condition, I would say that the planning commission will require a report from Chief Shanahan or his colleagues at the fire department regarding an inspection to be completed of this interior facility within the next 30 days.
How's that sound, Eric?
Sounds good to me.
I'll second that.
Okay. We can put a discussion. And just so you know, as long as it meets all these conditions, that's why we approve it, you know, and all, all the other things that you had brought up would be dealt with with the county or the state.
Okay. I see some irony here.
Some what?
Irony.
Yeah. Okay, roll call vote.
Dennis Ferraro, yes.
Bethany Cody, yes.
Linda Winslow, yes.
Jim Johnson, yes. Motion approved. Okay, 6B, draft charter township of Marquette, blight and property maintenance ordinance discussion. Eric?
This is largely on there as a placeholder. We do anticipate having a much more in-depth discussion on this at our next meeting on the 22nd, but we've been going, we, Jason and I, I guess mostly me at this point with him being up the past few weeks, but we've been going back and forth with township attorney Zappa on that draft version, so really nothing to report or show you tonight, but like I said, we do anticipate having a more detailed discussion on the 22nd.
So, so I would like to encourage everyone in the audience to really pay attention to the proposals for the blight changes, the blight ordinance changes. We're hoping that they are effective in cleaning up some of the blight in our township. I guess, I guess that's what I would say. We've, we've noted multiple times here that that is a huge complaint of our residents is all the extra cars sitting in people's yards without license and no tires and, you know, lots of stuff. Yeah, lots of stuff, so, so, you know, I guess I'm talking to the choir here, right? Yeah, so anyways, perfect, maybe they'll see it. Thanks, Jim.
Any other questions or comments for Eric on the blight order? All right, 6C, master plan update discussion.
Included in your packet tonight are near, I will say near final versions of chapters one and two. I do know both by myself and talking with a couple commissioners before the meeting that there are some errors and things that need to be changed within these chapters, but Lori with SEH just wanted to get these over for our review. I have not made my way through them completely yet either, so I just received these on Friday, basically the day the packets went out. So again, there for your review. I would be open to any discussion, but I really, again, this is kind of a, another kind of placeholder, but I'd encourage you to look over these chapters in the next couple weeks and I do, again, anticipate having a more in-depth discussion on this at the 22nd meeting or the meeting on the 22nd.
And just so y'all know, I'm sure you know, but on the 15th, we have another steering committee meeting?
Correct, yeah. Good, very good point, yeah. Thank you for mentioning that.
January 15th?
Yeah.
What, what time is it?
Six. Six to eight and it'll be, there's a board meeting that night in here, so it'll be in the community center, community room. So like I said, I'd welcome any discussion tonight if you do have any comments on this, otherwise, and I know Lynn had said she wanted to comment on it, so.
Want to comment now?
Yeah, that's okay. I thought it was, you know, I wrote a few master plans since I've been here, I thought it was very well done. The only thing I want to try to stress is that the public thinks, you know, since we're government, they think that we're going to go in and make things happen and the master plan kind of alludes to that in a couple places. I saw some, some of those typos and stuff too, but that's not what I was interested in. I did have a question on page 19. Housing we know is the biggie, that's, I don't know how many meetings I go to right now for housing, but on page 19, under housing units, the last sentence in that first paragraph says nearby areas like the city of Marquette saw a 4% decrease in housing units. And I'm wondering if you can check with CH and find out with that, how that happens? If that means the availability is less because, I don't think the sentence is clear.
Where does that end again? Is it?
Page 19, chapter two.
I got it.
Housing units.
Mm-hmm, okay, so it says.
Kind of the last sentence in the first paragraph, in that paragraph, it says, "The city of Marquette saw a 4% decrease in housing units," because they're talking about the ratios and the percentages of, of housing, home ownership and the apartment, you know, rentals and stuff. So I'm wondering how there can be a decrease, what, if they're going to make a statement like that, that it's not qualified.
I think, yeah, maybe some housing was torn down.
That's what I was trying to think.
Yeah, northern's torn down housing.
Yeah, if that's what it is. I just think it's because it's.
Maybe that's confusing.
They made a point to say it.
Yeah.
I agree. Yep, I agree with your concern that it's not, not enough context is given.
Yes.
But the table right below it, I mean, that's where I guess the data comes from and the census is cited, so I mean, that's I guess where the data comes from, but I would agree with you that the context needed is not there.
Yeah, yeah. The other thing that has happened in the city is apartments have been turned back into single-family housing.
Oh, yeah, I didn't think of that. I thought maybe the Airbnbs were kind of.
Probably not, but yeah.
But I didn't think about that. But that's a lot.
Lots of people have decided.
Maybe that is. I mean, they've, obviously they got the justification for it somewhere, I just think it should be clarified.
And it's only through 2020.
Yeah.
So, you know, I.
It's about 10 years.
It's unfortunate that there isn't more data to 2024 because that's easy to retrieve with taxes.
They're using the census, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, then on the next page, on 21, again with housing costs, it's the second to last sentence. Strategies could include promoting the development of affordable housing, revising zoning regulations to support diverse housing options, implementing policies. So they're saying that, that the township should implement policies to ensure that rising property values do not displace long-term residents. I don't think we can do that. Township government, and that's my whole point, township government is so different from even city government, you know that, versus state and, and federal, that we're really, especially being a charter township, we're really restricted on what we can do. We can't go out and develop apartment complexes and stuff. We're, we can work with developers and try to see if our zoning complies or if we need to make changes, you know, we're really restricted. I have a developer that I'm talking to now that I just, you know, we've done all we can from a legal standpoint, from a, from a municipal standpoint. So my only objection to how this is written a little bit is that it says, it makes it look like the township can do these things. Now, we can do policies, we can do, we can change ordinances and stuff, change zoning regulations absolutely, you know, make it more convenient to have a duplex or a fourplex. We can do that kind of stuff to help the housing market, but we can't change it and, and that's what I'm, you know, promoting, we can promote a little bit and it's kind of down in the housing tenure, right below that, it refers to table 28, which is on the next page, but second to the last sentence says, "Given the high percentage of owner-occupied units, future planning should focus on maintaining or increasing availabilities of homes for ownership." We can't do that. You know, so this, if, if they want to make those statements, that's okay. They just have to clarify and maybe some of their adjectives have to change a little bit because it's going to give the public pardon?
We could strike implementing.
Yeah, maybe.
And then it would just be promoting the concept.
Exactly.
So, okay.
And I would, I would say and the, the few members of the commission that are on the steering committee, I think will remember and know this, but in going through some of the, at our last steering committee meeting, going through some of the preliminary goals and objectives, some of the, like in regards, for example, in regards to tourism, one of their objectives was start a responsible tourism campaign or something like that. And we brought up at that meeting, well, there's Travel Marquette that does all of that stuff. So there was quite a few of those things within the goals and objectives that we were going through and saying, no, this organization deals with that or we can't do that. And so there was some, a lot of clarification that night, so I, I think this is kind of the same thing here.
Yeah. Well, especially when you're working from a survey, because we had the, the whole county and some outliers, I think, too.
Yeah.
That were responding, which was great to get the input, but they have a misconception of what we're allowed to do. Many of them maybe even live in cities, you know, we know a big part of this was a city.
And we, and we, and we did welcome everybody, township president or not, to the survey.
Yeah, because they've got good ideas. They just don't know, again, the difference between city and township is, is night and day on how we have to function. And I think, you know, you said that they wanted to just kind of get this out so everybody could see it and stuff, but the quality, I mean, I printed this on the township computer, so the quality of the grass is kind of, kind of not good. So if they can, you know, make it bigger or do something, it would be helpful. And I don't really know if I like the personal preference, the white writing on the dark background.
Oh.
No hard time clarifying the letters.
Yeah, yeah.
Which is not quite as clear, maybe just do it in black.
They need to change that, yeah. They put blue and white letters and blue or something not good.
One other point on page 23 at the top. This would be educational attainment. The very, the first complete sentence says, "Additionally, the township should consider investing in educational facilities." Now, how do we do that? With taxpayer money? I don't think so. So somebody must have said that. Programs to support lifelong learning and skill development, there might be some, some little ways that we could, you know, we have to be really careful with taxpayer dollars. I mean, we can't hardly donate to anything other than like the fireworks because that's a community-wide thing. So that, that's, that's a recommendation, I don't know if it should be written that way.
We could strike that, just say courage.
Yeah.
Just so you know, I missed the second meeting, but on the first meeting, we've been going through this page by page and there was a lot of this in there where they said we should do this and we should do that and we change it to recommendations instead of that we should do it.
That's great.
And we didn't get to this part yet, so that's.
Yeah, I know, this is the first time, yeah, and maybe you would have picked it up, but.
Totally. I'm assuming it's going to be changed at this 15th meeting.
Okay.
Where we'll take all this out of there that we know that we can't do.
Yeah, well, and some of that you might not know that you can do it and I'm not an expert by any means. I'm not trying to say that, you know, I'm the attorney or whatever, but just from my knowledge of doing this, this is stuff, a lot of it we can't physically do. But on the, the last page, well, 24, I wrote good with, with it circled. It's under commuter characteristics. Second to the last sentence, "Short commute times suggest that many residents work within or near the township, which could influence the planning of the commercial and business districts to support local employment." That's a good sentence and it's a good idea too, that, you know, that we can work on that. So I just wanted to end with a good note because it is, it's very well done. I'm anxious to see the rest of it. I love the, the statistics, as long as you have the, you know, they're quantitative and you can back them up. So thanks for listening, I appreciate it.
One thing I would add, kind of on the note of statistics, the original version that was provided to Jason and I of this chapter one and two included a lot of those, almost all of the survey results, but in an effort to keep the plan itself concise, we advised that they put those survey results as an appendix. So they'll still be included in the plan, just not within the, the plan proper itself.
Perfect. Thank you, appreciate your time.
Any other comments?
I thought the vision statement was excellent and we can, I saw some typographical errors and so forth, we can just clear that up for steering committee.
Did you have a date you wanted to have this approved by? Can't remember what Jason said before, do you remember if there was a date?
Like the final plan itself, I, I don't remember what the, the headline date is, no.
All right. Number seven, unfinished business, none at this time, no correspondence, township board report. Mrs. Winslow.
Yeah, hey, the township board, Matt. It was a rather short meeting. That was the goal, there wasn't a football game, I don't know, but it was a Thursday night, so whatever. Some committee members were appointed and I think there are still some open seats that, and if you're interested in knowing what they are or want to apply, our supervisor will be happy, happy to talk to you. So, other than that, what I thought was exciting was that the Marquette Township Board had a work session on Monday, January 6th with a person who did. a work session on Monday, January sixth, with a person who deals with, let's see, how would be the best way to say that, she deals with all kinds of things, but one of the things is she deals with Brownfield, and it was a very interesting presentation, and as Lynn said earlier, it is taped and you can grab it and watch it. I, I learned a lot, but I think I could listen to it again and learn some more, and Jim mentioned that things have changed with the whole Brownfield in the last ten years, yeah, so relatively new out there, focusing on housing, so interesting, and housing is a big issue in our master plan, people really want housing. So anyways, that was it. Any questions? Anything to bring back to the Township Board? Okay, thank you.
Rec. Committee Report?
Nothing at this time.
And I'm assuming we can eliminate roll committee report from now on?
We certainly can, as that committee has been disbanded. Yeah, nothing to add.
And any planning and zoning report?
Or nothing substantial, it's been kind of a quiet few weeks, planning and discussions with Michigan Veterans Homes are ongoing, had a meeting with kind of their architectural team earlier in the week, between planning, the fire department and them, to kind of go over some of the preliminary fire department requirements for a site plan, but other than that, unless there's any specific questions, I have nothing else to report.
Are we going to get any more of the capital outlay plans or?
CIP program?
Yeah, capital improvement.
Good question, I'll, I'll ask Jason about that tomorrow.
That's going to be coming up pretty soon.
It'll be my first question for him when he gets back.
All right, any announcements from anyone? Any more public comment from anyone? Nope.
Okay.
Well, I could comment, but I won't.
You're more than welcome to.
Yeah, really.
We can take it.
Well, I said I, I need some irony here, excuse me?
Yeah, you're going to have to state your name, Denver.
Okay, my name is Jean Whitman, Shelby, fourteen, Northwood Lane, Marquette. Mr. Ferraro, you are president of the CSCLS organization regarding environmental issues?
Correct.
And doing a fine job, I might add, and I'm happy for decisions that have been made, but I do find it ironic that with the potential for pollution, that you made the nomination to approve this project, and I really don't feel as though this board has done their due diligence, I don't think you know what you're doing, really, in, in regards to this, and I find that kind of sad, but I find it ironic that you agree with this, considering what might be polluted.
Well, that's kind of, I mentioned to you, that, that's not in our jurisdiction, I guess, really, and you can't look at that part of it to deny that, because we're not really allowed to do that, it's, that isn't part of what we do, we have to just look at all the rules and regulations, and if they do meet those, then we are obligated to approve it.
If they do what?
If, if we, if they meet all the rules and regulations and ordinances that are set in the township, then we're kind of obligated to approve it, and anything else is done by the other agencies. So we don't, we don't really look at the pollution part of it, but we can make recommendations like you, like Denny did.
But you don't need to ignore it either?
Well, we kind of do have to ignore, because that's, that's not our job, that part of it isn't our job, and we can't deny something based on that.
That's very unfortunate, maybe you need to look at that.
But as, as a planning commission, we can't, that's up to the county and the state, they do all that, regulate all that. But Denny did put a lot in there about, you know, to make, recommend that all this is done by inspection or, you know, the state or whatever needs to be done, so, but thank you for coming. Anyone else?
Is it, is it public comment closed? Are you closing the public comment period?
I am, and then we're going to additional comments by planning commissioners, which I think you want to make one.
I do, yes, we're very concerned about pollution of wetlands, pollution of streams. As far as we can tell by what's presented to us here, there's no evidence that this particular business, or any business that has preceded it, have polluted or degraded that stream or that wetland. If you had presented such evidence, then we would, we would then respond, and you and I don't have to get into a back and forth here, I'm just responding to your public comment, you know, as a, as a, as a comment by, as a commissioner, so I am very concerned about wetlands in Marquette County and in this township. In fact, our organization is promoting the preservation of wetlands and doing everything we can to raise public awareness about it, and we, of course, do not want any pollution in the Dead River, and extremely into the Dead River or into the lake. If you come to this, if you have any evidence that that business is polluting that stream in any way, you know, you could approach the planning commission and the township supervisor, John Kengas, and we'll consider it if it comes within our purview, and we'll, we'll take action.
Of course, we have known of this business that they were operating, we had, nobody knew about it, and it's winter, so I can't discern whether there's pollution or not at this point.
A, a special use permit can be revoked, so, you know, if there's, if there's some evidence that this is harming the environment, harming your land and interests that you have in your land, you can bring that to the township, you can bring it to the planning commission, and, you know, we, we will address it.
After the fact.
Go ahead.
Well, it's all about facts, if you don't have the facts, you can't speculate, and we don't speculate, we just apply the ordinance. I want to make one more comment, it has nothing to do with that. One of our former colleagues here, Steve Hakenen, will not be with us anymore as a planning commissioner, and I would like to make a comment, and I would like this to be reflected in minutes, a note of appreciation to Mr. Hakenen for his service on the planning commission for five years, and I believe before that he was on the ZBA, if I'm not mistaken, but anyway, I, I don't, I can't speak to that, but while he was here on the planning commission, Steve, who had a background in engineering and in working as a surveyor here in the township and throughout Marquette County, brought a lot of technical expertise to issues that are presented to this planning commission in terms of site plans and so on and so forth, and his input and his questioning, sometimes a, a very aggressive questioning of applicants, I, I feel have educated me in the process of learning what, what it is to be a planning commissioner, so I would just like to thank Mr. Hakenen for his service.
I'll piggyback off of that, and also thank Steve Hakenen for his services, the only thing I was going to add was just to remind everybody about starting in February about the garbage, if your date was pickup on Thursday, it's going to be on Tuesday, just to kind of keep getting the word out, that it changes in February.
Put it off Tuesday night instead of Wednesday.
Yeah, Monday night.
Monday night, Jim.
Starting in February, yeah.
That's it?
That's it.
And I will say, along with their support, Steve taught me a lot of stuff, I have no idea about the surveys, and so that was great, I mean, great education for sure. The other thing is, I still, I, I just want to say this again, I already said it once, but, you know, it's in the best interest of everyone if there are some soil samples done ahead of time, and maybe some water samples of that creek, and I'm sure that the university has students who would be happy to do some assisting there if you know someone to ask. Okay, and then, yeah, that's just my only, thank you. The next board meeting is on the sixteenth, what's today, seven days from today, right? Yeah, starts, we're happy to have people in our audience, it starts at five-thirty, and we're usually out of there by seven-thirty, so, yeah, come, come and, come and be part of your community.
You said the board meeting on the fifteenth?
Well, Lynn said, what's, what's seven days from today?
Fifteenth, correct?
Fifteenth.
And then this is for the next planning commission meeting on the twenty-second?
Yeah.
Just to clarify there, sorry.
Yeah, she was talking about the?
The next township board meeting, yeah.
And I'd like to thank Steve also, I haven't missed a lot of his expertise as well, and thank him for his service, and I'm assuming we can send something out to him, Eric? Okay. And thanks, everyone, for coming, it's kind of nice to have people out there to look at, appreciate it. Almost had a quorum for the township board tonight.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Close to it.
We do.
You do?
Well, four, we do.
Oh, all right. Okay, we need adjourned. Thank you.